Alrighty, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our March work session. That is crazy that we're saying March already. So it's Board Appreciation Week, Month, Week, Month, and we'll do it all. Our wonderful schools and principals and PDC staff spoiled us rotten tonight. And we want to say a special thank you to Ms. Rochelle, Ms. Cindy for putting on the decorations and the food. It was fantastic. We appreciate all of you guys. And Ms. Ben. Thank you much. Alrighty, so let's get going. Next week, we'll have the approval of the minutes, approval of the agenda. Ms. Stevens, you'll have a update with us for our Clean and Safe School Committee report. Some recognitions. And we may or may not have some requests to appear before the board. Alrighty, so let's hop into Superintendent Department reports. Dr. Green?
The new base report is there. And on Friday, we had a hundred forty day of course. We did a hundred forty day count. We're holding steady just twelve thousand nine hundred students. So I don't think we're quite there in fifteen thousand this year of August. Here we go.
Alright. Alright, Ms. Houston?
Alright, I just have my invoices paid between ten thousand and twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine for the month of March. The first one is Aiken Ford's, Aikens Ford for Gen- out of the general fund for nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars for twenty sixteen Ford Explorer for Transportation Department. The next one is the core project, which was paid out of ESER SPED funds for twenty-one thousand one hundred and twenty for curriculum for SPED High School and Middle School students. And the last one is amazon.com, and this was paid for using the hygiene product products in Georgia's school grant for eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. And that is for feminine hygiene project products, and that's for middle school and high schools.
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Alrighty, Mr. Burnham?
Good evening. Just a quick update on our two building projects. New elementary school is coming along very well. Still on, on time and within budget. See there, we've got some more black top down. And doing a good bit of work now on the outside with sidewalks and rain leader piping and that sort of thing. On the inside, starting to kind of get to toward the end on our finishes with the floor. They're all covered up. Which you see the brown paper there. Ceiling tile, the remainder of it should be going in here within the next, starting within the next week. Market boards are in place and we'll start to see the plumbing pictures go in the restroom area. So just rolling right along in there. Ambassador two. Now we're starting to come out of the ground there. A key piece to that project there is the wall that you see at the end of that blue plastic. And the blue plastic represents the lower floor and that slab was poured, I think Wednesday maybe of last week. Two in the morning, they started and and so they're, they're really moving along. It's an extremely busy place right now. If any of you travel along, we call it the perimeter two eighty-five. Certain times of day is, is happening. Concrete pipe, steel, all that sort of stuff starting to pile up out there, ready to get that thing moving right along. So very, very pleased with both projects.
Joe, I've got a quick question on, on the Bassa Phase two. Is there a, there's a weight room going in out there?
There is.
That's in the plans?
Yes, sir.
Seems to be some un- unsubstantiated information floating around out in the rumor mill that, that was not part of the plan. And I just wanted to be sure we clarified that. And then temporary one also for next year, correct?
Right, we have a provision for a temporary space. We work with the school on that and maintenance to establish that room in the gym. So they'd have that for next school year. And then yes, that following fall of twenty-four will have the weight room.
Appreciate it. I just wanted to get some clarity on that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alright. Thank y'all. Thanks, sir. Alright, Ms. Hodges. School mascot and logo for Austin Road.
What do you want?
Yes.
You just seem real casual tonight. So we, the interim SGT met last week and we, this is what we voted on. So five out of six voted for this one and the other one was very similar. I've had one vote for that, but this was their second. And so we're working with them and think Michael Jones did a great job with it.
Oh, yeah. That's great. Well done. Rose off the tongue real nice. Austin Road Rockets.
Rockets.
I like it. Home of the Rockets. Love it. Alright, that's exciting. Alrighty, Dr. Moten?
Thank you. Good evening. I want to thank you for your support for teaching and learning and some of the decisions that you have made to support us post pandemic, during the pandemic and post pandemic as we try to reach that level. You have approved some positions that have been very instrumental to teaching and learning. And tonight, Mrs. Tamara Bolden and Dr. Beth McMichael are going to talk to you about the roles, the success and the experiences that we've had with one of those positions, which is the academic interventionist. So again, I want to thank you for approving that position and it has been extremely helpful for our students who needed some additional support. So at this time, I welcome Dr. McMichael and Mrs. Bolden to the podium.
Good evening. At like Dr. Moten said, I'm Tamara Bolden. I'm one of the two district math specialists.
And I'm Dr. Beth McMichael and I'm our K eight district literacy specialist.
So at the end of last school year, Beth and I were tasked with providing support for the fifteen academic interventionists in our district. These teachers support students at the elementary, middle and high school levels. We're waiting on our slides. One second.
So you might be wondering, what is an academic interventionist? An academic interventionist is basically a certified teacher who provides academic support for students that can go on with their regular classroom instruction. And so our academic interventionists were experiencing academic challenges and we have seen a lot of that. We also had students experiencing challenges before the pandemic, but we've seen even more of that after. So the academic intervention are helping to fill those skill gaps that those students have. It's part of our pandemic recovery plan. And we currently have fifteen academic interventionists serving in our elementary schools, our middle schools and our high schools.
Let's see, can you go back to the previous slide? Right there. So the majority of our academic interventionists are funded through the CARES Act or ESER funds. The numbers on the slides, on this slide show the financial investment that the district has made in the academic interventionist program. We do have one school that has two academic interventionists, the State Elementary, and they fund one of their, their literacy academic interventionists through the L four GA grant. All the others are, are funded through ESER funds.
Just to give you a little bit of information about that timeline, how it's evolved. Last year, we hired on the interventionists and each school really developed their own intervention program based on their unique needs. Because what's needed in an elementary school intervention program might not be the same thing that's needed in a high school intervention program. So they developed our own programs. Last year, Tamara and I started meeting with them periodically and we did things like sharing ideas, sharing data. We tried to standardize some of our procedures and especially our data collection procedures. Moving forward, next year, we are continue to, will continue to meet with those academic interventions. And we'll also look at, looking at the effects of a program from this year, looking at our end of year data and making tweaks as we get along.
So we wanted to give you a little bit of a glimpse into what our academic interventionists.
We decided it was important to focus on early inter-
So I'm right.
Intervention reason, which is why I primarily work with students in kindergarten through second grade. By focusing on early intervention, using intensive, explicit and systematic instruction, we can close the reading gap before these students reach third grade. Students today do not come to school with the same level of kindergarten readiness as students in the past. As soon as we see a deficit in the foundational skills necessary for learning to read, we need to provide interventions. My students have shown tremendous growth in their foundational skills and are making great progress in reading. But they've also grown in ways that don't show up in assessments. They have gone from being afraid to try for fear of messing up to having more confidence in themselves. Instead of focusing on what is hard for them and telling me that they can't do it, they are applying the strategies they have learned to decode and read. I love to see how excited they become when I tell them we are learning a new sound or that we have a new story to read. I can honestly say that being an academic interventionist has been the most rewarding part of my career. I know I'm making a difference and changing lives every day.
I'm helping students with math skills they may have missed during the pandemic using the learning continuum on math. I look at the students' data from the math test and see what standards they haven't mastered in previous grades. Then we work with those previous grades math standards and use the learning continuum for math to help them reach their grade level standards. For example, I'm working with some fourth graders on time. The data showed me that they need help on first grade standards for telling time to the hour and the half hour. Then, once we master those standards, we move on to second and third grade standards on time. So that when their fourth grade teacher teaches them about elapsed time and intervals of time, they can more easily understand and succeed on grade level standards. Students have not just shown high growth and high achievement in my groups. They are more confident in their answers and show resilience when they get answers wrong.
I moved from a kindergarten classroom into the academic intervention position. I began with the Fountas and Penel leveled literacy intervention kit. When we dug into the data, I took the students who had the lowest DIBL scores. They were nowhere close to grade level. With my kindergarten phonics background and realizing these students needed so much more than a push in reading levels, I researched the science of reading. There's a small phonics component in the Fountas and Penel kit, but these students were lacking in their phonemic foundational skills. I attended the RISA Five Pillars of Reading class this year in Winterville. That class confirmed to me that these kids who need the most help do not have a great grasp of rhyme, letter sounds, blends and digraphs. They need additional support in breaking down words into decodable and recognizable chunks. It's really hard to read if you can't decode. You can't successfully decode unless you understand phonics.
At the beginning of the year, because this job was new at Westside, my students were a bit confused as to why they were coming to my room once or twice a week. I could observe reservations, conservation, and then attempts to try and cover up their relative weakness in academics. I observed students who had learned how to cope with their loss in math and ELA skills and were unable and unwilling to ask for help or try on difficult tasks because of their learned helplessness. Throughout the year, as I've kept a pretty consistent schedule of students, I have observed such growth in my students' soft skills and self advocacy. I get feedback that they are more willing to try in class. They're more vocal about not understanding something and they're more confident about making mistakes and learning from them. This job has absolutely changed my life. The opportunity I have had in this position to change a student's mind about education and the importance of finding small successes in life has changed my personal view on life itself. The optimism and hope I see in students who run to me and tell me they passed their math test or their HMH test score grew. These kids may not have ever felt that feeling of success before, and it's the most rewarding feeling to know that I got to be part of that experience with them.
I have a unique opportunity to work with students throughout the school day. First, I push into their ELA classrooms to co-teach with the classroom ELA teachers in grade six through eight. Together, the classroom teachers and I collaborate to meet the needs of all of our students. We look at assessment data and discuss their struggles as well as their progress to guide our instruction. It is a joint effort with the students' needs at the forefront to help them be most successful. During work sessions, I conference one-on-one or with small groups to assist with their reading comprehension. Afterwards, students come to my classroom to work on the same standards in a small group setting. I reinforce and remediate reading and writing skills according to the needs of our students. At times, I preview a comprehension scale that is forthcoming to give students prior knowledge. I also provide their reading interventions and progress monitoring assessments according to their response to intervention plans. My classroom is a positive learning environment where students safely struggle and strive to make progress. Building positive relationships with these kids has proven effective. They feel more confident and the desire to be successful has returned to them.
In the beginning of the school year, students were resistant to working with us. They were unsure and they believed they can do it on their own. Our data showed that they needed some support and would benefit from our services. We focused on students setting goals for themselves and helping them understand the steps they needed to take to reach those goals. After about a month of running the program, we saw a shift where students began advocating for themselves and approaching us for assistance and help. Students would choose to work with us because they recognize the need for guidance and structure. In addition, students are beginning to hold themselves accountable for their learning. They are understanding what steps they need to take to be successful as individuals. When it comes down to it, we can push and push, but the student must decide they want to put in the work. Now, when we meet with these students, we can have an honest discussion in which they will own the fact they must do their part. Seeing them take accountability has been huge.
So when dealing with a school serving nearly two thousand students, the first and foremost obvious task is identifying which students need the most support and then figuring out what modes of support the student needs. I ended up with several categories of students to serve. Credit deficient students, extremely credit deficient students, transfer students, fifth year students, chronically absent students and currently failing students. Many students ended up falling into several of those categories. It soon became apparent that the most immediate efforts should be allocated for the fourth year students as we needed them to graduate in less than a year. This focus on seniors led me to work closely with Allison Kramer, our graduation specialist. As a team, we were able to contact many students on a daily basis and many will have one-on-one conversations several times a semester with their counselor, their graduation coach and their academic interventionist. So this arrangement truly creates a culture of support that hasn't existed in any school I've been a part of. So while it's relatively easy to measure the efficacy of my program by doing things like tracking credits recovered, I've realized that the true litmus test for student success is continued success.
We hope that you enjoyed that and, you know, we just wanted to give you a little bit of a glimpse into what our academic interventionists do on a daily basis. We would have loved to have featured all fifteen of our academic interventionists, but the video would have been really long. So, you know, that was a pretty good cross-section there and we would like to give a shout out to Michael Jones for helping us put that video together.
That was awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's really cool to get to take a chance on classes like that. What the money and why it looks like it. So we, we spent a few more rounds to work with this group of interventions. They are amazing and they, they really help me with what they're doing wholeheartedly and I think it shows. So the last time we met, I think we met back in January, we met to review some mid-year data, share ideas and we talked about trends. We had the intervention work at their lowest performing. Program and we all. That are going on and personalities of, of their class performance students in their program. And then we kind of compared across schools and some trends definitely emerged. So I'm going to share with you some of our K five trends. It's going to be happening. The first one is. Our kindergarten students have shown the most significant growth. So that really tells us that when we, and actually spend early and interviewing early, that's the best thing we can do. Kindergarten did show a lot of growth. Many students who have now been a part of the intervention program for a second year seem to be making the most progress. So what that tells us is that the different programs are always a quick fix. Sometimes it takes that sustained work over time to really catch kids up. Another thing we noticed that daily explicit phonics instruction is very impactful. We've asked teachers to look at pieces of data. They look at the group of their students in the elementary school. And overwhelmingly, they look at the phonics skills kids are missing and they start their intervention there, filling in those skill gaps. Students with inconsistent attendance are struggling to make progress. That probably wasn't no surprise. And students who are served in small groups and maybe three to four students for longer segments of time, maybe thirty minutes, they, they want progress. And students who are even that were one-on-one, but they so. From those trends and mold and program as we go, you know, taking things away from those lessons that were learned. The teachers were.
We also did the same work with our interventionists in grades six through twelve and some of the trends that came out there were that students in the second year of intervention are showing strong growth. And we're finding that, you know, we, we all know that it takes a village, but our interventionists are learning that really with students in middle school and high school, intervention is more successful when it's a team effort. So they're pulling in the classroom teachers, the parents, any person who has a touch on a child's life, they're pulling all those pieces together. I need stronger glasses too, because I don't have any. Thank you. This is why we work well together. Intervention is building strong relationships with students seems kind of to be the key in working with students and motivating them. And teaching students how to set goals and track their own progress, those types of soft skills that we know are so important. That really has made an impact. And then, you know, they are doing things like teaching students how to advocate. Teaching students how to organize their materials so that they're ready for the day. Those kinds of things that, you know, I think someone on the video said it doesn't really show up in a test score, but it makes a difference. They really are going above and beyond, not just providing content, but providing all the types of support that will benefit their students.
So we didn't put this in the presentation, but it probably didn't say that as well. But Tamara, we've been to the fact that a lot of our little school high school interventions are fully in a team of people. We also have the interventions to our lead parent workshops. I know the interventions that kind of just led to parent workshops. The interventions, I know the ones at Bassa are leading workshops for teachers. These are strategies that we are finding that have success with working with these students and maybe they'll work for you too. So there's reach and even, you know, moving far beyond the students they serve. So we have to be proud for this group. So to wrap it up, I just wanted to share how we, you know, measure the impact of the program, even though we said there's lots of things that we can't truly measure, but there are benefits. But we will look at some data at the end of the year. We're going to be looking at math data because it's one consistent piece of data we have to show growth. So payday, we're going to be looking at the percentages of payday students who met their math growth goal. And in high school, we're going to be looking at the percentage of students in nine or twelve who received all the credits that they had to. We will be able to.
I have a couple of questions. How many children are we serving? How many children are these interventionists reaching?
But I'll get back with you on that number. I have it written down.
That'd be good.
I wouldn't want to guess off the top of my head.
Okay. The next question is, let's talk about parental involvement a little bit. We know when kids aren't thrown up from school and they're not reading at grade level and they have terrible math skills, it usually has to do with what happened in their early years before they got to the school. So, and with COVID, we're coming up with this, I think it's become more apparent. We've, we've always had some issues with this. How much parental involvement are you seeing with these workshops that you're having? And you don't have to answer this to me. Just give back to me as a percentage of the kids who are in a program. Okay, that'd be great.
We vote on a lot of things and so it's always good to get updates on, on the things we did vote on. So we appreciate you like, like you keeping us updated on these. We love our interventionists. Alright, anything else? Alright, thank you, Dr. Moten. Alrighty, Ms. Banks? Alrighty, and Dr. Thompson? Alright, so we're going to move on down to new business with the transportation proposal by Mr. A.
Alright, y'all know we discussed this a little bit, got it out there now. Kind of expressed what the approach, you know, approach to it, gains we need to make and all that, but we're just looking for that big move. We've done as many small things as we can do to transportation at this point. You know, a lot of times transportation, not just having more problems than math book a lot of time. Just allow the, all the struggles we have getting things straightened out and fixed, but we believe we made a, made a good choice with all the things that this directs and it helps us within our district with different strategies. Recommendation Superintendent recommends approval of the transportation direct routing proposal, which will separate middle and high school routes by adjusting the bell schedule to the clock. Elementary seven thirty to two. High schools eight fifteen to three fifteen. Middle schools and aim nine o'clock four. The only thing I will add to that as far as the aim program goes, we're still still toggling on that a little bit. We may still shuttle that. We have, we still run it through some scenarios, but I just want to throw that out there since, you know, it's not in, you know, it's not out there that way. So still kind of working to do that. And we've not, you know, decided a hundred percent if that's the way we're going to go with that or not. The other part, just to make sure everybody's clear, the typical cascade would be elementary, middle, high school, but high school up in the middle of this just due to the sheer number of trips. Six hundred trips per high school, maybe a little bit more, give or take. Elementary, I mean, middle schools by a hundred and fifteen. So at that time of day, that's where we'll have the best boats and resources available to kind of support all that stuff. So I know that may, that may come up as a kind of a funny, why don't, you know, why does it that old or so? Anyway, any questions?
We had an email earlier. There's some parents who seem to be not very happy about the change in the time of day. I mean, I feel like most of these parents have been very on board with this.
Well, I mean, you're going to have some that's not. I mean, there's no way. It's too large of a change. I mean, we're going to have, it don't, don't fit their schedules. It don't fit their work scenario. I mean, we've made changes before, I think in the whole scheme of things. It's, it's a good thing. Yeah, they'll, they'll, you know, going to be those that, that don't like it and I'm ready for that. I'm ready for my email to light up and I'll, I'll be anywhere I need to be. You know, an open house or a school staff meeting, whatever I've got to do to try to help calm the nerves and let everybody have sense-making. You know, giving up information out there. One way or the other, we're going to have to do something. I'd rather us do this proactively than be in a reactive state, be pushed into this. But we're going there one way or the other. We just, we'd rather do it planned out, orchestrated, you know, and organized as we roll into it and get in the middle of the year or something and we just go, we can't do this no more because the model we have right now is not sustainable. I've been here three and a half years and I promise you I've done everything I can do. We've done everything we can do with that. And I don't feel like I have to sell that, but we've done all the little things we can do. And I mean, I think most people's on board that we've made some good changes over there, but we're at the threshold of something big has to happen. There's no more grains to kind of work around and sift through at this point. That's, that's my professional opinion. So.
This also buys us, buys us some more time on buses and drivers, right? This reduces our total number.
Absolutely. You actually, you actually don't have as many drivers. You don't need as many to cover the routes at that time because you're separating it out. All the drivers that are now currently doing middle and high school within that same time slot. Now you're separating that to separate brackets. So you still have the same number available running two separate times instead of all doing one time. So you're going to have, you're going to have some staff available to do other things. That's, yeah. And then you still got factory F M L A, absences, vacancies and all that. So you, you put it in that comb or it, it fills those voids pretty good.
One of the things that just don't get lost in looking at this at just bell times is we're separating middle.
Yes.
Absolutely. And one of the reasons that we get them all to some buses, so only middle school students will be on those bus stations and more in high school. I could be wrong about this observation. I mean, like if I ever made a decision that they would buy this.
Or maybe they were, you know, their class. Scores, so they didn't have a chance to get home and change and snack or do homework before they're it just clusters up that.
They have plenty of time. I don't mean to be disrespectful, but my son is in that same grade level at the same school. There's still time to go home and have a snack and I assure you, they don't really have homework. If they do, I'm not seeing it. There's still time to go home and have a snack and I assure you they don't really have homework. Um, if they do, I'm not seeing it. Because of that conversation, that it's fine, we may start. It's only, they're only getting home every year forty five minutes later and it's still four o'clock when they're getting out. Most sports programs don't start until five thirty or six. As parents are still in middle school, driving on the sports unless it's organized within the middle school and they're already campus and they stay after. So.
Voicing what a parent.
And I totally understand, but I'm trying to kind of also address it from being a parent in that same school. Um. They will be on campus if it's a sport within the school system after school directly, so that wouldn't interfere. And then again, most sports programs that are outside of um organized school sports. Are starting at six, six thirty.
It's going to be great.
And also. And we've, and we've, we've gone through it and tried to apply all the sensitivities we can. Then there comes that. That point break, this like, okay, you know, what was the greatest need and stuff. So, but we're willing to, willing to stand wherever I need to and and try to.
Also, also, it's very important to remember, I would say over the past decade, probably I've had more. Parent emails about middle school and high school kids being on the same buses and probably.
Yeah, that's, that's a common, what we're doing, what we're doing is very common anyway, and we're districts our size, it's common practice to have uh three levels, uh three, three brackets like that. Um, so we're just kind of getting into a a better mode for the size that we are, and this helps us get ahead of the growth. As I've used the analogy, we're we're the mud flat. We want to be the hood on it. So this gets us to the front of the bus and from the back of the bus. So that's what we're going to be. But. Again, we we understand the concerns completely, a hundred percent. And we'll embrace whatever now we need to.
We did have some questions about like. Some parents that didn't want their kids there by themselves in the mornings. There's going to be any discussion for school care for middle schoolers that.
Something, something we talked with the middle schools about. I don't think we have it at this point.
And the other question that I I spoke with you about, what was the, they were asking the reasoning why? We were um starting the high school before the middle school. Um, and and I spoke to that parent. Their main concern was how many students that we have. And I thought the doctor Michael is only a handful. Of students that middle schools that are actually playing at the high school level. So we're not talking a bunch of students. We're only talking a handful.
Yeah, and the other thing you'll hear like, you know, they'll say, well, there's not as many high school students. Most of them drive or, you know, whatever. Actually, that's the reason, that's the benefit, because it gives us, it gives us that extra opportunity to serve. To have the resources available to do everything. We can sit back and go, we've got a bus and a person for anything we need. The shuttle and the big Lord, all the other little things that eat up our day to day that we're stressing. People to go back and forth. So that's actually the same reason and they're going, you know, why this, why this is actually the reason we're doing it. Uh, is there are more opportunities to serve and have the resources readily available to take care of that type of day because that is a hot time.
That's why we're having them elementary, I mean, the middle school go at nine. And and.
Stop afternoon terms, uh, just from that.
Mainly for the afternoon times that we're having the high schoolers.
Yes, that that's, that we're just covering that regular stuff.
Okay, and so basically this should take more buses off. The streets later in the day, right? Technically.
Yes, well, you're having different times too. You'll have less buses. On the bus lanes and plus you think about your middle and high school, a lot of us speed up together at the same time. When you separate it out forty five minutes to an hour, you got completely different traffic patterns at the time of day.
Right.
Also, absolutely, the fact, you know, that some schools we've got picking up at the. One school, middle school going to the high school or vice versa, you've got kids tend to sit on the bus for twenty, thirty minutes, he, all these types of things.
Yeah, we we we've actually got some studies whether it's.
All the, all the positive vastly really outweigh the the. It just absolutely anything we do, you know, anytime we change anything, we're going to have some inconvenience and that's unfortunate, but um. This one, the strength was really vastly outweighs the the, right, the positive on this.
You're saying it.
Thank you, appreciate it, sir. All right, Dr. Darby.
An extension of the fun stuff.
No, excuse me, Dr. Darby, excuse me. Can I get everybody's approval to add that to the consent agenda for X for later? Do we need to, we're going to vote on that tonight?
Say on that, just if y'all, just.
We'll talk about it tonight. Okay, excuse me, go ahead.
So the fun stuff, code of conduct, um, just a brief summary real quick. Each year, um, January and February, we asked our school governors to review the code of conduct. And ask for the district for changes, which is our vision to our code of conduct. And we also asked our school administrators for that. This year, we didn't receive any, uh, to have any changes to the code of conduct, which is exciting. Um, so the superintendent recommends placing the S Y twenty four. Proposed Bear County School System Student Code of Conduct on the table for public review until the next regular scheduled uh meeting of the board. Any questions for the code of conduct that I can answer?
All right, consent agenda. Thank you, sir. Mr. Webb.
If we're asking the superintendent to recommend entering into a first screen with Athens Janitorial. For the purchase and delivery of bestial equipment for the new elementary school in the amount of forty one thousand, six hundred dollars makes sense. Uh, we advertise this on our website and the Georgia procurement website. Four vendors provided pricing on this. And Athens Janitor is uh low. The low respondent and the one that we're recommending here. And this is for scrubbers and furnitures and restroom machines, that that sort of thing.
We've used them before, right, John?
All right, any questions? Considered. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Trump.
Good evening. The superintendent, superintendent recommends the approval of increasing meal prices for students and adults. Beginning next school year, the school nutrition department is facing numerous price increases with food, labor, insurance and benefits. So if on the first slide, um. Every food item we purchased for Barrow County School District costs significantly more than it did a few years ago. For instance, cans of peaches cost seventy seven percent more than last year. A case of breakfast chicken fillets costs eighty three percent more. A case of hamburger patties costs sixty two percent more. Our disposable gloves cost is a hundred and fifty four percent more. Napkins eighty percent and discharge at forty six percent more. In a district that serves more than twenty thousand meals a day, which is breakfast, lunch and snack, those costs increased that up pretty quickly. Um, healthcare and benefits will increase from nine hundred and forty five dollars to one thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. A six hundred thirty five dollar increase per employee per month. And we have about a hundred school nutrition employees. So that could be up to an additional sixty three thousand, five hundred a month just for school nutrition. Our classified employees are receiving a three percent pay raise. And then the last four years, um, nutrition salaries have increased sixty two percent. Our plate cost is averaging four dollars and five cents per meal and currently the cost for an adult meal is three fifty per meal. And regulations say that we cannot spend federal dollars to supplement adult meals, so we must increase the amount to um that we charge for adult meals. If you go, okay, the second slide. Um, if you look at this, Barrow is significantly less than other school districts and the national average. I pulled information from districts. In North Georgia that are small, medium and large. And about half these districts do plan to increase their meal prices, but have not set an amount yet. And then the next slide, the third slide, that's, um, this will show that we're asking for fifty cents per grade level. Barrel will still be less than the others except for Hall County and they're planning to increase their meal prices, but have not set an amount yet. And another thing is student meals in Barrow County have only increased one time in fourteen years. That's pretty good. Um, so our school meal program is expected to be self sustaining and covering our expenses with federal reimbursements and cafeteria sales. Congress did raise our um, the school year twenty two, twenty three, the national school lunch program and the school breakfast program reimbursement rates. By forty cents per lunch and fifty cents per breakfast is part of the bipartisan Ki- Keep Kids Fed Act. However, these additional funds are expiring at the end of the school year. So we don't have any additional funds. So we're asking for a price increase with school meals. Any questions?
What percent are we for free lunch?
Fifty two percent.
Fifty two percent. Are we still giving a lot of alternative meals?
Not many. We haven't gotten much. Our. You know, they're getting better about bringing their um. At work, lunch money. We're only at twenty one hundred dollars in charges right now. Where before, what we were like forty something thousand dollars before COVID hit. They're putting this.
Lot of hard works don't end.
Yeah. Having a charge policy in effect is a big time.
Great and um. Yeah, and you know, our free produce has gone down because a lot of folks. We didn't need it for a couple of years, so it's creeping back up, but it takes a lot of good at this.
Well, if we're going to do this now, is this sufficient? I don't want to have to come back next year and raise prices again. Is this sufficient? Is this going to get us through a while, you think?
Yes, ma'am.
Well.
We we took it up a little bit.
Just going to.
Barring, barring another worldwide shortage of some sort, yeah.
Well, I think given the fact that everything has gone up, I mean, you look at a hundred and fifty percent increase in some products that we're having to use every day. So I think you're doing a great job of of managing what you got. Um.
An amazing job of keeping it as long as they have.
Yeah.
Where it is, and to help, they're really part of it. Really help push us over on this one, that coupled with.
Miss Houston.
All right, um. All right, um, so we are trying to put furniture in the media center at Austin Road Elementary School, the Rockets. So um, we are asking that the superintendent recommends accepting the bid from school specialty for the Austin Road Elementary School Media Center. Total cost at ours, you should see the pirates, um, will be approximately ninety three thousand, six hundred and twenty nine dollars and twenty five cents. We are also asking for a contingency of ninety three hundred dollars for adjustments in the quantity of shelvings or tables. Um, the request in this request will come out of East Blossons for a hundred and two thousand, up to a hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and twenty nine dollars and twenty five cents. So five vendors responded to a bid that we put out on the Georgia Department website and also on our website. Um, there was a pre-bid meeting and only Kai and School Specialty participated to review the layout. School Specialty was the only vendor who could provide all of the products requested. And in the media center, it's really important that we get all the products. Together so everything looks um. Like it all goes together. Um, so selection was made using the best price and the durable product, uniform D of products. That's the word I was looking for and timeliness of delivery. So um, y'all have any questions? There's also a layout there to kind of show the different layouts that they could do.
All right, consent agenda. Thanks, ma'am.
Since we want to do these. We need to go back.
My next two.
Yep.
I yield my time to Dan Murphy, our.
Yield the well. Well, good evening. So what we have this evening is the next step in our process. Authorizing issuing selling bonds. Think on that back in December with Tom Owens and like he outlined the process. And we call the election and then congratulations, we had a successful election last week. So what you have this evening is the board resolution declaring the results of that election. It's just another, you know, step in the process. Um, after you approve this resolution, we have to get the board of elections to certify the election results. And then have to notify the district attorney, have a validation hearing. So you know, there's an array of these steps that we'll go through. Throughout the process and and this is just the next one of these we have. Um, really, this is just declaring the results that we've been provided. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about it. Uh, if you are willing and able to approve this resolution this evening, that would be wonderful. In terms of the timeline we're trying to keep to get to bond closing um before school is out early in summer, but we can work with it either way. But uh. Just let me know if you have any questions or concerns.
All right, if no questions, we'll vote on this later tonight. Thank you, sir. Mr. Purno.
Okay, we're making a recommendation to amend our contract with the community foundation. Uh, for development of the C fit campus. Um, it's necessary to amend the contract. Uh, mainly because site work is set to begin on that project this summer. And we've got a very large playground that's going to show up um. This summer, and so we just needed to address a number of items and I'll. Kind of touch on a few of those right now. Um. Total cost to be raised by the foundation was adjusted from thirteen and a half million to five and a half million. And again, that's in context of just developing the site, kind of. You know, staying away from the building at its time. Um. We also shrunk the timeframe down. The current contract or agreement has a ten year period. For completion, but again, that incorporates or that takes into account of renovating the building and we've, we've set that aside. Uh, and to focus on the site. So we've, we've narrowed that down to a three year window to get the site work complete. Um, another provision that we wanted to have in there was that the school system would not prepay. Or make any advance orders for uh equipment. Supplies, any of that sort of stuff. We've got to make sure we've got a hundred percent of the funds. Um, for whatever portion of the project we're going to undertake before we uh before we move down that, down that road. Um. And also the the routine maintenance and the operation. Um. Of the site is something that we needed to address as well. Um. So for the playground, the school system will continue to uh, you know, pick up the trash and cut the grass. But the foundation is going to focus on maintaining the playground equipment. We'll have some involvement in that probably on a day to day basis, but um. Annual checkup, maybe a monthly checkup, any mechanical stuff uh that that may be an issue with the playground. We're going to look to the foundation. Uh, to handle that. Um, looking a little bit further out, there's some other site provisions that that are being planned. And you know, if we can accommodate those things, that's going to be great. We're not sure if we, we can get all that done, but. A pavilion, the dog park, potentially even a splash pad. And so there's, there's a piece in this amendment as well that talks about ownership of the land. And there may be an opportunity for us, a need for us to shift ownership of those site pieces there. Um. Because we, we don't want to be in the park business. We can't be. Um. And you know, we take care of playgrounds, but. This is a different animal, no pun intended. Um. And same thing with the splash pad and and these other items. So it may be necessary. I'm sure we will come back to you. With further amendments as this project continues on. But for this summer and getting site work going, these are the critical pieces that we thought we needed to address first. So. Um, that's, that's what's in that attachment there that you've got.
Joe, I want to take just a second and and. Thank everyone. Everyone that's been connected with this whole thing, um, but especially. You and and members of the staff, Jennifer and and others that have been a such a vital part of in of getting this through. Uh, you know, this isn't a normal school system type of thing, um, but it's, um, it's. It's been a labor of love, I hope, for for some of us. And uh, but it's seeing it coming together the way it has, it's it's been amazing. Um, several board members have been instrumental in that also, past and present, Miss Stevens amongst them. And um. And, um, you know, it, it's just, it's, again, it's just not a normal thing. So we, we've had to feel our way through it on both sides, but it just shows the power of a public school with their community, what they can bring to the table for our kids and our community. And it's just a, really a bold way for us to, as a school system, to support the community that supports us so well. Just to, again, want to, I know it's been some extra work and, and outside of the normal job duties of quite a number of folks, uh, in, in, really in all areas, but especially in Joe and in Jennifer, Ms. Houston's area too. Um, so just thank you on behalf of everyone that said anything else to do with it. Just stellar job getting everything pulled together and staying on top of it and, and those type of things.
Thank you. Yeah, if you've seen the article in the paper, it's, it's called the bear of source for good reason. I mean, it's, it's giant. And, uh, it, I think this, the foundation has said we want a destination playground and that's what this will be. Um, there'll be nothing like it really in the country. It's being, um, manufactured in Europe right now and be shipped overseas this summer and.
Just like everything else with that, with our school system, it's one of a kind.
That's right.
Okay, all right, consent agenda? All right, thank you, sir. All right, we'll have authorizations for communities to meet, Mr. Kane, Miss Mulch, myself to go out for the clean and safe school visits. Um, and then at this time, we're going to go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action for dismissal or period evaluation of a officer or employee or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent and to discuss or vote to authorize negotiations to purchase dispose of or lease property authorized ordering and appraisal related to the acquisition or disposal of real estate entered to a contract to purchase, dispose of or lease property subject to approval in a subsequent public vote or enter into an option to purchase, dispose of or lease real estate subject to approval in a subsequent, subsequent, but I can't talk, public vote.
Yes.
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 Yes.